Order the regular city council meeting for Monday, July 8th. Please rise for the public hearings.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Holly, may I call the roll please? Welton, Bizzer, Ballinger, Weiss?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And we do have two council members that are absent this evening. Noah had given us prior information that he would not be here. And I also received a call from Councilman Bizzer that he will be working later this evening for his employer.
I make a motion to excuse Councilmembers Ballinger and Bizzer.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and now I'm looking for approval of the agenda for this evening, unless there are any changes that a council member would like to make.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as per...
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And now we have an opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation. All right. Now, we're going to go ahead and move on to approval of the council meeting minutes of June 24th. If there's no changes, I'm looking for a motion to approve is submitted.
So move.
All right.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Mr. Weiss, this evening you've had the opportunity to review accounts payable.
I have. I have checks 71943 through 71988, with two exceptions. I did not locate checks 71953, nor checks 71954.
Corey, can you make note of that? What were those?
For fringe holding account, the both of them.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I hear that.
Yes.
Those are two payroll-related checks that had to run separately than normal. The reason for that is with the start of the new fiscal year, council may remember that we have a new way that we're splitting both DPW costs, as well as there's now a health insurance line item and a life insurance line item for each department, as opposed to one fringe department. So that is why you see that check there, why it's not in that pile.
Because it's with payroll.
Yeah. It's probably not payroll.
All right.
Let me do a quick math and I'll tell you what the total is. The new total will be $45,886.90.
All right, thank you. For making note of that. So we have a motion with a new total of $45,886.90.
Second.
Thank you. Holly, may I call the roll please? Weiss?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Welton?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you very much. All right, and let's see here. We are very close. Okay. All right, so it looks like we are at 7:05. So I'd like to call to order the public hearing for the Downtown Development Authority Plan Amendment at 7:05. And Corey, I'm going to turn this right over to you.
Thank you. Just going to give a very brief presentation for the benefit of the public and the viewing audience, as well as council. So for the past several years, the Downtown Development Authority, or DDA, has been planning for a parking lot reconstruction behind the bistro, the hardware, the Red Cedar Grill, and that quadrant there. They initially were saving cash each year to try to pay for this with cash. They were able to achieve that after two to three years of savings. The first big hurdle was they decided to purchase 20-foot of the neighboring property to the east, so that they could expand the lot and have a proper drive aisle versus what's there today. And then as the plans came together, really in mid to late 2018, there was an opportunity to work with the Red Cedar Grill to incorporate that parking lot into the project. And so what is in front of you today is a culmination of a lot of effort and a lot of work by the DDA. And it is a plan amendment that would authorize the construction of the parking lot, the two parcels, as well as it would authorize a permanent usement from the DDA, or from Red Cedar Grill to the DDA that would allow for that parking lot project to occur. It would also allow for ingress and egress into the alleyway, which is owned by the city. But currently, there's not an access way from the Red Cedar Grill side of the fence, as well as the coordination of dumpsters, utilizing all the property as basically one parking lot. Through this process, we've had extensive dialogue with the businesses in that quadrant. So each of the business owners, I've had an opportunity to chat with or sit down with to review the project. That has caused us to make a few tweaks as we've found out more about their needs and how they need to operate for deliveries and trash and various things that they rely on that parking lot for. We also have sent out notices. Every property owner within the DDA got a notice about tonight's hearing. We also had to post it in 20 places throughout town. And we accomplished that. And we also had to advertise it in the paper and alert the other taxing authorities to the hearing. So for those that have been our council for a few years, there was a plan amendment in early 2018. It's a similar process. And what we're asking for tonight is consideration of first reading of an ordinance, which will come after the public hearing. But for the benefit of the public, I just wanted to explain that that is the purpose of the plan amendment. It's to do the parking lot project. All told, it's going to be a little over $300,000 project. It's going to have urban gutter. It's going to have landscaping. It's going to really beautify that back lot there and hopefully serve that quadrant for many years to come.
Great. Thank you so much, Corey. And I can also just follow up with that. The DDA has done a lot of work to make this project happen. And I think it's a great opportunity to really revitalize that back area, improve the parking, and hopefully make it mutually beneficial for patrons and for the business owners. So with that being said, I will go ahead... Yes, Tim?
Thank you. Reviewing the documents. There's a couple of minor typos in the ordinance document itself. I think it should be fixed. And then a couple of more significant ones in the plan document. On page three... Page four of Section 9A in your packet, subsection 5 toward the top of the page, second line, the words "of" ah can be deleted. There's superfluous there. Moving down to subsection B2 at the end, there's a closed parenthesis that can go, as well as the comma after "and." Those are minor. But moving ahead to Section 9A, page 12, at the top, Section 8.1. That should be 2019 plan amendment. Where it says 201. And in the next page, 13, Section 11.1, the name Miranda should be Neanda with no R.
Okay.
Everything else looks good.
Great. Thank you very much. So with those changes captured, so that when we can get those taken care of. All right. Okay. I will close the public hearing.
Oh, yes. Is this open to...
If you call for public comment.
Oh, public comment. Sorry. All right. Can I have Sandy go first and then call for public comment? Councilmember Welton?
This is open to the public too, right?
Yes, 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 yes.
I mean, we come into town and they can park there.
Oh, yes.
It's not just the businesses running it south.
No.
I just want to make sure of that because that's happened before.
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
You're sorry?
No, not at all. And now I'll go ahead and call for public comment. Yes, please step up to the podium. State your name and your address.
Sure.
My name's John Hayes. My address is 162 East Grand River. The brick house directly across the street.
Okay.
I own the property that abuts the project over there.
Yes.
And I've been in that house now for 44 years. I've experienced some of the negatives of some of the dumpsters in the past. I think it's real key to make sure that the grease dumpsters, the people close, they're covered. I can't smell that in my house if it's not covered. But if I'm out there mowing the lawn or working painting my garage or something like that, I can smell it. It's a pretty foul smell sometimes. If... Not all the time, but I mean, there have been times when it's bad. But one thing I wanted to point out though is that there's a part... I want to thank Corey for spending a lot of time with me on this. I even met with him for probably a half hour last week. And he showed me all the last-minute changes and things like that. We went over there. We were right there. And one thing he pointed out is that in the plans, it says protect the existing fence. That's a key thing for me. I'll tell you why. Because there used to be a really rotten old fence there. It was probably 30 years old. It looked like stuff that was set up with four-by-four pieces of wood. Kind of stuff a person would go for a person, you know, just a do-it-yourself project in your backyard or around your patio or something. But we wanted something better because I had at least, I think, twice, one for sure where someone had too much to drink the night before and drove right through a section of the old fence and ended up in my garden, almost. You know, you see the tire tracks and all that. So I... Well, actually, it was Craig's idea who at that time owned the Red Cedar Grill. He mentioned to me one time. And I said, yes. He mentioned the possibility of us going together and jointly paying for a new fence, a stronger fence. This was in the summer of 2008. And that's what we did. And I have here with me the approved fence permit, the specifications for it required on it. One of the things was the six-by-six posts. And we had those posts... Lasodin Fence was our contractor. We had those posts embedded in concrete. There's, I think, seven or eight posts. And so the fence is in very good condition yet. It looks kind of ratty because there's vines and weeds that just grow up and no one seems to be doing much to trying to keep those down. But structurally, I think it's in very good condition. And I remember what it was like. The first 30 years I lived here, when that fence was really rotten-looking. I hate to see that go again. So I just want to... I hope that people do stick to that, protect the fence.
Absolutely.
And also, in the details, the total bill for that was about $2,000, a little over $2,800. I paid for it all upfront with one check for me. And Craig reimbursed me for 50% of it over about the next six months. And I've got his name. I got a copy of the... You know, I got the number of the permit approved and the application, all this stuff. If anybody wants to look at it. I want to keep my copies, but I can show you if you have any questions, or I can get back and mail you or something. And that's all. I just, you know, I hate to see some of the... Too many dumpsters in one spot. But at least that is kind of off in the center. And I mean, it's about as far as ways you can get for most of those businesses, I think.
Right.
And so I'm pleased with it. As I can tell, I read that it was underground or something. But I mean, I think Corey was very, very open with me and fair. And they called me when they told me there was some last-minute changes about a week ago and gave me a revised copy of the plans because of that. That's all I have to say. Just I appreciate the time to speak. And I think it looks like a good project. I think I live with it. My house is on... I have two lots over there. And where I live is on, you know, the east end of it.
Right.
So unless I'm out there in my yard on a warm day, it's windy, and someone left a top open, I probably aren't going to smell it. But I just will... But please don't blow the fence down.
I appreciate the fact that you come over. And I actually, I love your house. It's just, it's so nice. And it's such a nice feature right there. And the fact that you were able to meet with Corey, he was able to explain the project to you and taking into consideration that fence and how important it is for you, I would have to say that I 100% trust what he has spoken to you about. And we'll do our best to make sure that nothing changes over there.
I appreciate it. One thing I'd like to mention, this is kind of off-topic. But when I moved here, my ex-wife and I bought that house. Everybody called it Dr. Erby's house. Because Dr. Erby lived in that house for about 50 or 52 years. He died, I think, in 1953 or '54. And everywhere I went, people said, oh, you're the guy that lives in Dr. Erby's house.
Right.
Well, now, I've been there 44 years now. So I hope to be there for enough that the people start calling it John Hayes's house.
John Hayes's house. Well, we should make a sign. It's not the doctor's house anymore. But I thank you so much for coming and for sharing that information with us. And I'm really glad you had an opportunity to meet with Corey.
I'd be happy to state it at the end of the meeting in case you want to look at any of this stuff. Or Corey's got my... I can mail it to you or...
Yeah.
I can scan some copies if you want and mail them to you.
I think we're probably... I think we're going to be okay, right, Corey?
Yep.
Yeah. I think we're going to be okay.
Okay. So you need me to stick around with you?
No. But we appreciate you walking across and speaking with us.
All right. Thanks for letting me do it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Bye.
All right. So I am going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:16. All right. Now, moving on to our action items for this evening. Our first action item is the first reading of the Downtown Development Authority Plan Amendment Ordinance.
So I can't remember how we craft these motions. Sounds good to me. I make a motion for the first reading of an ordinance to confirm the adoption of the City of Williamson's Downtown Development Authority's ninth amended development plan and tax increment financing plan amendment.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any other further questions for Corey this evening? Nope. All right. Holly? Gilroy?
Yes.
Welton?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
All right. Moving right along, we have our, what seems to be, I think, annual Michigan Municipal League 2019 Fund Trustee Election. And what's great about the MML is they pretty much give us a ballot and what we should do. So I am looking for a motion to move that, our nominees forward.
You need to vote for three people we don't know.
We do.
Perhaps it would be improper tip for us to ask Corey to input on this? But it's fine. Okay. Corey? Any... Since I think you probably would know these...
Yeah, I don't know two of the folks. I do know the city manager from Grand Ledge and would speak fondly of his experience.
Looks like you just graduated school.
They are asking for... There's three people and there's three spots. So I don't think you can go wrong.
Good. Well, I'll make a motion to vote for the three trustees that are on the official ballot for the MML Workers' Compensation Fund.
Second.
Thank you. Holly?
Who's a graduate of Disney?
Welton?
Who's a graduate of Disney?
Welton?
I'm just fascinated because he was a graduate of the Disney Institute for Leadership.
Yeah.
It's cool.
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
All right.
Fine. Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
We'll have to follow up on that and find out exactly what he learned at Disney. Might be beneficial to all of us. All right. So our next action item is consideration of Councilmember Smith continuing as a Williamson Reserve Police Officer. And so I had this... I had to go through this too. And they let me stay. I don't know about you.
Which do you want to do first? The first one or the second one?
Probably the first one.
Okay. I make a motion to allow Councilwoman Smith to abstain from voting on this issue. Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to enter... That's right. Councilman Dean Smith to continue his serving as Williamson Police Reserve Officer without compensation.
We have to make the motion abstain first.
Oh, yeah. We have to... Who would like to support the motion for Mr. Smith to abstain?
Support that motion.
All right. Holly? Smith?
I'm abstaining.
You can actually vote on this.
Okay.
Let's say, yes. Please. Weiss?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Welton?
Yeah.
All right. And then Councilman Welton also read the second motion. Do you have support? Do we need to repeat it? Okay. Can you repeat that one right here?
You want me to repeat it?
Yeah, please.
Just wanted to ask you. I should have heard my second one. Motion to authorize Councilman Dean Smith to continue to serve as Williamson Police Reserve with Officer without compensation.
Second.
All right. Holly? Smith? Weiss?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Welton?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And thank you for your service on the Reserve Officer group. Appreciate it. All right. Moving right along, we have the TRITARA Phase 1 Agreement. Corey?
All right. Tonight, before we use your request to allow the acceptance of a proposal from TRITARA to do a Phase 1 environmental site assessment on the Red Cedar Grill parcel. If you read through the fine details of the plan amendment from the DDA, you will see that there is an authorization there for some expenses related to this. There was some questioning of our need for this because we're not outright buying the property. But in an abundance of caution, our DDA attorney, John Quinlan, did recommend that we get this basic Phase 1. We are also receiving a quick claim deed for a small sliver of the property that we will retain ownership of. So that would support, you know, doing this as well. So all told, the request is for $2,000 that would be paid for as part of this project from the DDA fund. Because of the city's involvement with the quick claim deed, as well as authorizing the overall plan amendment, I felt like it was appropriate to bring it to the city council.
Great. And I do appreciate that.
There is one other minor note, which is that the request in action was to make the approval contingent on the city attorney's review. Due to vacations last week, we didn't have that. But Tim did have a chance to review it today. And I will defer to him for the comments.
Yes, the terms and conditions. First section... The first sentence of Section 9 has an indemnification provision. Cities constitutionally prohibited from granting an indemnification. We see this all the time in contracts. And our first recommendation is to work with a consultant and have them delete that sentence from the agreement. And if they absolutely will not do it, then we suggest that they qualify it with the phrase "to the extent permitted by law," which would then just delay the issue in case it ever comes up again. And we would argue then that it's not permitted by law.
Correct. All right. Thank you.
So if either one of those revisions to it would be approved for signature by the mayor upon approval of the city council.
All right. So Corey, you can follow up with them on this?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Tim.
You're welcome.
All right. So with that being said then, if there are no questions regarding this, I'm looking for that motion to move forward.
Make a motion to enter an agreement with TRITARA for Phase 1 environmental site assessment at a cost of $2,000 and file the review of the city attorney with the suggested changes that he has paid.
Great. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Holly? Weiss?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Welton?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
All right. Our last action item for this evening is the Greater Lansing Convention and Visitors Bureau 2020 advertisement. And we do this every year. And I think it bodes well for us. It gets Williamson out there in a publication that has far reach. And it looks like you guys have a sample of what would be going... Is this what would be going in for this next? Or are we going to try to change this up?
I would say we'll probably... We've used that for two years in our own house.
Yep, so do a couple different pictures.
We'll have some discussion with DDA.
Okay. All right.[1441.54] Any questions for Cory regarding his memo? What we've done in the past is we've, we've split the costs between City of Williamson, the Downtown Development Authority, and Chamber of Commerce, or other businesses have kind of all shared in the cost of advertising in this booklet.
I saw we had mentioned the city splitting with the DDA and possibly the Chamber. Would we talk to the Chamber again before we sent it out, or would that be?
Yep, actually Tammy and I have got a meeting scheduled to talk a little bit more about that. The language there was taken from last year and historically there was an opportunity for businesses to participate. And I had a chance to talk to Holly and Bart a little bit about that history. And so it may be a little late in the game for that, so I think council has to assume that it'll be half of the 3650 from the city and half from the DDA. But I do plan to chat with Tammy a little bit about some options that we might be able to look at.
Any other questions for Cory? Looking for that motion.
I make a motion to move forward with the process of creating the 2019 Greater Lansing Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Oh, yeah. Uh-oh, yep.
That was my bad. That should be 2020, sorry.
Yep, 2020. Can you amend that please, Dan?
I make a friendly amendment to change to 2020 advertisements in the amount of $3,650 to be split between the City of Williamson, Downtown Development Authority, and potentially the Williamson Area Chamber of Commerce for businesses.
Thank you. All right, Holly?
Weiss?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Welton?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
All right, that concludes our action items for this evening. So we'll move right along to discussion items. And what we have in our packet is residential streetlights for the Forest of Nottingham. Their homeowners association has approached the city and I'm going to turn this right over to Cory.
Thank you. So really what I'm looking for from council is a policy discussion on how to handle these requests. My initial standpoint was to suggest that we would require a special assessment district in order to put new streetlights in and to install them. The way that we would typically see this work in a newer development is the developer, like the other utilities, would put in the initial infrastructure cost. And then just like with water mains and sewer mains, we end up taking that expense on long-term. That is how we've handled that in other subdivisions that have streetlights. Initially, I thought that that was going to go over with Forest of Nottingham well. They, they had two options in front of them. They could contract directly with DTE and they would actually have a slightly lower annual operating cost. But as they further discussed it, there's, there's definitely a question of why they would be made to pay for their lights when the city pays for streetlights in other areas. Now, keep in mind that means the, the operating cost of the monthly electric bill that we're paying for other streetlights. I haven't gone all the way into the, the deep end on this to look at how we've handled new streetlight requests in other areas. I think it's probably safe to say that we've never done a special assessment district for lighting. So before I go too far with them, I wanted to prevent, you know, something happening here where we were blindsided by a staff recommendation or decision and just get a sense from council if there's a feeling one way or the other on how to treat this. I can't say that we've had a lot of these requests come in, but I am concerned about how we treat future requests that we could potentially get, particularly in developments that never had lights installed, that are maybe 20 to 30 years old, which we have a few of. I can think of three offhand that are, that are residential subdivisions that do not have streetlights, and so that requests could come at any time for any one of these. The last piece of this that I should mention is that their request has been particularly at their entrances as opposed to throughout the subdivision. And parts of Forest of Nottingham is private, and so I think if the whole thing was private, it'd probably be a simple answer that they would have to take care of that, just like they would their roads. But in this case, you know, there is an argument that there's a, they're on a public street when they get closer to the entrance. So with that, I will take any questions or thoughts as to, you know, what council pressure is on.
So if there's three other, you're telling me there's three other places that have the potential that they don't have lights that would just set a precedence in?
I think so. I think if we went the route of saying, "We'll, we'll go through the process of installing them, but we would do a special assessment district to pay for that," I think we would likely, that would be our policy going forward. You know, the flip side of this is, you know, we haven't budgeted
Right.
$6,500 to do new streetlights in the subdivision.
Right.
So that's, that's a consideration too, you know, where, where does, where does our willingness to spend general fund money end?
I think this is a tough one. I feel like because we pay the rest of town residential areas, and these are, they don't have streetlights now, and that's what makes it tough, would be giving them new streetlights, but it's hard to tell them, "We're going to have you pay for the electric on your streetlights when we pay the electric in all the other residential areas." Could we say, here's my thought on it, we say the existing subdivision that do not have streetlights, we basically absorb them, but any new built subdivision going forward, it's built into the process, okay, if you want streetlights, this is billed to, to you guys.
Cory, just a question. In the memo, it says it had been several months since you heard anything from the property manager. It was actually one of HOA board members that approached us.
Yep.
And then when I did the math, it's a savings, if they were to request it through the city, only a savings of $171.48. My feeling is, I, I think we're putting city staff in a position where it's, the work that they're going to put into this hourly through a special assessment, that's not taking into account the cost. I don't want to get in the business of us providing streetlights for subdivisions. If they can do it through the HOA direct with DTE, not an issue. But I think it's putting a burden on our staff. I'd be against it.
And I'm going to have to echo that because I have the exact same thing written down. And I guess my, my thing is, is it seems like that that developer should have had the forethought to think about that when they, when they did this development. It's unfortunate that there's several others in town that those developers didn't, you know, recognize that as well, but I completely agree. I, I don't think, you know, we haven't budgeted for it. It's not, it's something we weren't anticipating. And also the time and the resources of our staff to put time into this, I'm, I'm not, I'm not a fan of it.
I agree, I agree completely. I think it should have been thought of when they were developing it. I mean, what, when you develop something, when you're developing something like a subdivision, why wouldn't you think about lighting?
And especially out there on Lynn Road where it is already dark when you drive down because of the wooded areas and everything, so.
In fact, I'm thinking of, wasn't it, this specific, maybe in four or ten, Cory, but there's a special issue to deal with drainage or?
Yeah, yeah, we did do that. We gave them special consideration with their, the new build that's happening on the south side. And so it seems like that possibly would have been brought up at that time too.
Well, just to clarify, so sometimes there's a, there's tension between the folks developing it and then the folks that end up living there long-term.
Correct.
Right? You know, a developer, we do not require streetlights in a new development. And so when you're, when you're developing a property for housing, you know, you're trying to, to make a profit. And so if it's not required, chances are you're not going to see that go in there. And now the folks that live there and they've had to endure that, that's, I think, where the request is coming from. One of the reasons why I was leaning toward a special assessment option is when I worked in Ohio, every subdivision that was new, if they wanted streetlights, we had a lighting district. And I ran them, we were able to charge a small administrative fee on top of that because there was work that had to be done annually to keep the costs updated. So there's a precedent for this. I, I also put a request on the list serve in Michigan to find out other, what other places have done here. And, and communities, they draw a line in the sand or they just continue to fund them as they do in the past. So there's not a one-size-fits-all to this question, but what I really was looking for is sort of a sense from council on, on the feelings on this one. Because, you know, my sense is right now, I, I don't know that the person that approached me speaks for the whole board. I did get the sense that it was, it was going to go toward one of these options until I got that call, and I think it was a newer board member, you know, who asked a very appropriate question of us, so.
I guess I would want to also maybe task planning commission to figure out why we don't require streetlights in new communities. And specifically, I'm thinking of Victory Meadows, that's going to be going out to the west of town. Because we certainly don't want this to keep happening in the future. I would think that that would be a safety issue for, for a community and they would want streetlights. So that's my take on it. Any other questions or thoughts or comments on this discussion item?
Would there be any ability to put a special assessment option that you're kind of proposing? Obviously, this isn't budgeted now, but can we make them essentially create a process in which they're applying for next year's budget so that we can plan for that, so that that special assessment's not like catching us, you know, we're not fronting that kind of money and we have the opportunity to actually budget for it, if it's not like an emergency?
Right, no, that's a good question. Yes, there's a way to do that. If, if they wanted to proceed, we would have to front the money until such time that we collected it. There, there is a methodology, and I would certainly have to consult with the attorney, where you could amateurize that cost over a couple of years, but in that case, the city would still be fronting the initial installation. But that reduces the payment that those properties make. And really, at the cost they're talking about, it would be a fairly minor amount, even the installation cost spread out across the benefiting properties there. But once that, that initial installation was paid off, I mean, you're talking $300 a year split over, I don't know exactly how many parcels, but talking minors, minor in a way. It's that, it's that initial upfront cost that's, that's more of the challenge.
This is a smaller amount. I'm kind of thinking like if we're setting the precedence that this is how we're doing business, the next one might not be small.
Right.
Yep.
So if we set the precedent that you have to allow us the opportunity to budget for it, then if those bigger ones do come, we're not caught.
Yes.
It's my understanding that this is, this request particularly is only for two lights on Lynn Road, which is a public road, not lighting throughout the private roads of the subdivision. And I think the main thrust of it was is that they have schoolchildren waiting for buses out there. But it is a public road and I, I also would agree that we wouldn't want the city to pay for the development within the public, within the private road system.
Can you back, come follow up with some more information for our next council meeting?
Well, I'll, I'll follow up with them and we'll continue to follow up.
Great, thank you Cory, thank you for working on that. All right, moving right along then, we did receive some correspondence. Just to let our viewing public out there know that the Friends of the Williamson Parks has done such a tremendous amount of work. We've had a lot of activity over at Volunteers Park, which is next to the Commons and the Trent Allen Memorial Basketball Courts, which were just recently resurfaced. They are kicking off their groundbreaking on July 24th. They are still looking for volunteers. They do have a Facebook page that you could certainly contact them if you're looking to wanting to volunteer. It looks like they've got the Big Wheels track already, concrete out there, so a lot of good things are happening over there. And then we also did receive correspondence from WOW and I think that had to do with some new channels to the lineup. So that's basically what we received from them. Cory, did you have anything you wanted to add to your city manager's report?
Yes, just briefly, we got word today that CSX Railroad will be closing the railroad crossing on Putno Street beginning tomorrow at 7:00 in the morning. That will be a three-day closure. And so they, they put up signs today at the last minute as we tried to work with them because they were slated to start it today. We had not received any advance notice until we saw crews out there this morning. So certainly appreciate everybody out there working with us as we get through that for the next couple of days and making their way down Lynn Road to Cornwall or Zimmer to get back into town. Because Meach Road, the crossing there is also closed, so it's not in the city limits, but it would be a way people could bypass that in the coming days. So just, we tried to get the word out through Nixol.
Yes.
Have them sign up for Nixol if they still, as well as our Facebook page and.
City website?
Yep.
All right, well, yes, so council members, if you could share that throughout your social media community, that would be fantastic. Chief?
That's the reporter.
All right, thank you. All right, does anybody have anything that they would like to share from subcommittees, meetings? I know that we've had a couple cancellations due to non-agenda items, that'd be good.
We have ZBA tomorrow and it's going to be a full agenda.
Okay, all right, well then I expect to hear some good things next council meeting from you, Dan. All right, we have another opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes. Do you at least want to say hi, Tammy?
Hi.
Tammy's back there, flip back to camera.
Hi.
Thanks for coming. All right, council member comments, I'll start with Dan.
I'd like to just commend staff on how they got out the information on the railroad crossing closures today with no notice. It was, you know, we got emails almost immediately. I saw it was out on the social media. They did a great job getting that out. I wish, I'm sure along with everyone else, that CSX had given us more notice. I'm sure this had been long in the, the working for them, so in the future, if they could give us a little more notice, that'd be great. But I think city staff did a great job doing what they could to let everyone know.
Mr. Smith, it's your first council meeting.
Yes, so I'd like to thank everybody for the warm welcome. It's a big honor to be part of this body and to be able to serve in a city capacity like this.
We love you.
Looking forward to it.
Thanks for wearing a tie.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, sure. Sandy?
Again, great job getting information out. I've worked with the city for over 30 years and we've never had any, any cooperation from the railroad people. So, I mean, that is, that's, I've shared with everybody I know and I keep getting things back, so they're getting them. And people are sending me emojis with swear words coming out of their mouth. Yeah, they're not happy.
Well, hopefully it won't, the, the good thing is, school is not in session. The bad thing is, is it was short notice, but I, I think, you know, kudos to the city staff and hopefully we don't have any issues on either side of the tracks tomorrow. Mr. Weiss?
I have nothing, thank you.
All right. I am going to just mention very quickly, I saw on Facebook, social media always tells you everything that you want to know. I am so saddened by the announcement that Barrett's will be closing this year. And their sales start tomorrow. Rich has done a fantastic job with his family running Barrett's. It's been one of those mainstays in Williamson for so many years. So I would encourage anybody out there, if you've shopped Barrett's in the past, definitely get in there, talk to Rich, wish them well as they really get into retirement and pick up some CarHearts, Stormy Cromer, some Williamson gear, you know, help them, help them finish this year out with a bang and just really sad to see Barrett's go.
Very sad.
And I hope everybody had a great relaxing fourth. And I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting this evening.